All right, good morning, everyone. I apologize, we've been dealing with a matter at the jail this morning that was high priority. So, we'll begin now with a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. If everyone will stand and join me. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for a new day, and we thank you for the cooler weather, for a nice break from the heat. We just begin now and start this meeting off asking for your guidance and your blessing over each agenda item here. We thank you for our guests that have come today, for our interested taxpayers here within the county, for the employees that are here to conduct this meeting. We just turn this meeting over to you and ask that you would preside now and lead us to the right decision in each and every matter. We pray for our servicemen and women, our first responders. We pray for their daily and nightly protection in whatever matter that they are dealing with. Once again, we just thank you for your love, for your mercy, and your forgiveness. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Let's have a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, for the record, today is the 26th day of June 2017. This is our second meeting of the month, one we called "Special Meeting," and it's about 12 after 9:00. And we're going to begin with item number one, which is time for public comments or requests for information on a non-agenda items in accordance with our Texas Open Meetings Act. I don't have anyone that has filled out a form, but if there's anyone that would like to address the court at this time. If not, we'll move on to item number two, considering possibly approve the minutes from our June 12th. That was our first meeting of the month of June, our regular meeting, and we have a set of minutes to approve. The choice is prepared for us.
Make a motion, we approve minutes, June 12th.
Motion made by Commissioner Parker to approve those minutes. Seconded by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number three is a report from our road engineer, Mr. Roger Ledbetter. Welcome, Roger.
Morning. Hi. Start by going over a couple things recently. Last couple weeks, we worked on County Road 1905, from Mckinney 71 to the Suffolk River. It was in terrible shape. Lots of potholes in it, approximately 300 to 400, ranging in size from one foot wide to four foot wide, and across the 4 to 6 inches in deep. This road had become a tough hit. Our safety issue, when we spent about five working days, eleven of the roads were flying in face. All the road and rig crew worked on this together, and I thought the produce was safe and slid around the gravel road. I've probably worked every form on County Road 1905. Hopefully, we'll be able to lengthen sections of roads every three or four weeks, every three or four months, and keep them in shape.
What was the length of that work on that road?
About two and a half miles. Two and a half miles. I'm down to see. We've been doing a lot of repairs on equipment, especially our dump trucks. We currently have all of our dump trucks in good working order. Much of this work was performed on rainy days by the road and rig crew. I'm lucky to have some workers that are pretty good mechanics. We modified one of our oil trucks and turned it into the gravity feed mortar truck. Lucky to have one guy, Don Young. He's a...I'm glad he's working for the road and rig department. He's an exit welder, and he's good at barricading different parts and working on equipment. We're currently working on rehabbing a herbicide trailer so we can get a herbicide program going. Hopefully, this will cut down on the amount of side cutting we have to do. And we're currently working on a tack trailer, spraying tin-layer asphalt on the bottom and the side of the parrot, and on the top of the existing paper surface to help bond our coals to the existing roadway and help prevent our repairs from tearing up. And Dana, that's what your 500 gallon diesel tank will be used for, tank on the tack trailer, and your 500 gallon gas tank. We placed it on the back porch of the main shop, and it will be used for motor oil solders. And Jimmy, your 500 gallon diesel tank, we put it on the back porch of the shop, and it will be used for hydraulic fluid sources. We should be able to save a bit of money by buying our motor oil and hydraulic fluid in what quantity than in the smallest thing we're getting in now. We plan on concentrating on base fairs and potholes during the end of July, and hopefully we'll have all of our equipment we need to start rehabbing some of our roads. The first road we plan on rehabbing is County Road 1065. It's over close to Winfield, just from the I-30 front road over to 67. I think this is a good road, the road and rig department learns, we'll jump in along the rest of the road. I think this section's, I think it's less than a mile long.
It is.
So, I think it'd be a good one to start with. The covert work, part of the structure was supposed to start on the day, it is not going to start today, it's going to start Wednesday, and that was on County Road 4510. That's part of the FEMA money, and they were supposed to start doing two contracts at once, but that was started Wednesday. I've selected two people for our part-time mechanic positions. Y'all should be getting the paperwork approved. I don't know if you've seen it all already or not, I turned one in Friday. And y'all approved them for hiring. I'd like to get them started to work on July 5th. These part-time mechanics should help us improve some of our equipment down. And now, to the subject of equipment. The asphalt distributor trailer, it has been ordered, but it will take about six to eight weeks before we receive it. After we receive it, my employees will have to be trained to operate the trailer. And with that being said, we probably won't be doing any seal coating this summer, but that's going to almost put us out of season by the time we get the distributor here and get the employees trained. The water truck that the commissioner has approved us from last court session, the company we were going to rent it from was not willing to apply the rental fees towards the purchase of the water truck, so it turned out not to be a good deal for us, so we're not going to rent a water truck this time. We had purchased a three-inch water pump, and it was delivered last Thursday. The soil factory all approved for us to rent, should be delivered today. That will be delivered to the precinct two yards. If y'all want to come by and take a look at it, come by and see what we're trying to purchase. And the rental fee for this one does apply for the purchase of it. And if it ever stopped raining, we'll give something in. Y'all have any questions?
You knew there was a chance that rental wasn't going to be applied to the purchase. Even if it's not, do you still think that we need to do that?
I don't know. We got a gravity flow truck that's ready to go, we got a three-inch pump. We used one of the other oil trucks, one precinct, two oil trucks upon County Road 1905. So, I think we've got two trucks and used more trucks right now. I think we'll be okay.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions? You got a question, I'll cut you off.
I've not, at this time, we'll work on the budget. I'll just stay with the name of the bill.
Commissioners, any questions for Roger?
I will say, Roger, we always had our trucks inspected in December. You know, I know a lot of them are done.
Yeah, trying to get material. I don't know if the sheriff's office...at one time, the sheriff's office, he told me was going to purchase some sort of maintenance tracking program for track all the oil changes and all the permanent maintenance on how the sheriff's doing. I was hoping that it won't happen, and we could kind of kick it back on their solid work. But I don't know where they said that.
Well, always done, we had a book, and we'd write down the truck and the mileage, and record all that, and then we had stickers we could write on, put on the window, just like to get new change, and that helped us a lot.
Yeah, given the amount of stuff we've been doing, Peter, I always want to...
Well, you catch those...
...our freight folders, we could check them off. Right now, it's just figuring out what's been serviced, what hasn't been serviced. Some of the guys only know what's been serviced and hasn't been serviced. We got to get something for anybody to store.
You definitely did.
We got to be able to track it. Give it on paper, on... And the sheriff's office is going to get one, and we'll track it on a computer. Also, it would be nice to track the cost that we're spending on repairing the next piece of equipment.
James, at one time, was supposed to keep folders on every truck, and how much, if you had this done, or that done, or whatever.
Is that...
Repairs. I think it is. I think he did it.
No. But it would be nice to know how much is depending on each piece of equipment. When they start paying the money, the other time...
Well, that's why I did, we had one that just kept costing us, costing us, we got rid of it, but I know one time, I kept folders on it, David took the...
Does that need to be an elaborate system, or is that just a matter of setting up a paper file at your office?
It could be done either way, but what I say, sheriff's office is going to buy a computer program to do it. We could also use that same...
Okay.
Now, my...the sheriff's office is going, and Kerry was telling me about it.
Okay, very good.
We used one tech called Fleet Trant, and we kept all our services when everything needs to be serviced, but it's not cheap at all, or even. Plus, you got to have somebody that's going to have it.
It was a...I used Excel, but I understand, like, AT Carney, one of those specialty, they got those programs pretty cheap, reasonable now. Record jacket...
Does the same thing?
Does the same thing, only it was made for, just...
Yeah, I'm sure there's plenty of programs that...
Yeah.
That attract prevent maintenance.
It's sort of like the locations, you know, that were so high, it was prohibited for a small company like me back then, but the sheriff, that thing he got is unbelievable.
Did you say the sheriff has already got it?
No, I think they're looking into it as far as I know, they have got it, Kerry has got it. Because Kerry didn't want him to know this.
All right. Thank you for the report and the foundational steps that you're taking each week. I know you've taken a while getting organized and identifying your basic needs, and hopefully each week gets better and better for you.
Yeah, I might get a lot of that equipment, please.
Yeah, I'm sure. Are you ready to address these next items that have to do with the award on the bids for all these different materials?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'll begin with item number four, and that's our steel culverts. Thank you. I've got an extra one if anybody needs one. Okay, item four is to award bids for the steel culverts.
Yeah, I'm saying we're going to make a big comparison. What I want to do is accept McCoys as low bidder, but also accept Contex. McCoys, they only come in certain lengths, but they are air town if we need those lengths. It'd be nice to be able to get around here in town without having to go to the toll frame somewhere again. So, accept the culverts and also accept the Contex based on availability and length of car.
Okay. That's your recommendation?
That's my recommendation.
All right. Need a motion for this? Motion's made by Commissioner Fields.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Riddle, and that is to give the steel culvert business to McCoys, but allow the use of Contex when McCoys is unable to provide exactly what's specified. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number five, award bid for plastic culverts.
Plastic culverts, National Wholesale Supply with low bidder, and they are very close to Holmes. Now, the material comes from National Wholesale Supply, which they are air town, so we can pick it up at their warehouse. Their material comes in just 20-foot lengths, and has a level and sticky type connection, so you can put the pipes together. I think as far as the low bid, I would accept him as a low bid, but Holmes, I believe he gets it from Contex, in which we didn't get a bit of contact with the plastic pipe. And with Holmes, we had to go with the Contex, the toll frame will pick it up, but with Contex or Holmes pipe, we can get it at different lengths, whereas we can't get it at different lengths from wholesale. So, I'd like to through wholesale, and also be able to get the material from Holmes.
Okay. National Wholesale, then, would be the recommendation, with Holmes as a backup.
Now, do they...if we ordered something, they had it stop, it was coming this way with load, they'd bring it. If not, you had to pay for just to bring that, it was extra.
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's the same deal?
No.
I'm not sure exactly what it's going to be with wholesale.
Well, I'm talking about, they buy it for...
Yeah, I'm opposite of him right now. Wholesale would buy it, it would be delivered here to there.
Okay.
Mount Pleasant, and we'd go to Mount Pleasant if needed. Now, with Holmes, they specified in the bid, we had to go with the toll frame.
Right.
They not the same.
Saves you time and money to have it right here.
Yes.
All right, need a motion on that recommendation?
Make a motion.
Motion's made by Commissioner Applewhite, seconded by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Moving on, item number six is award bid for seal coat aggregate. Flip to page two.
I would like to recommend that we tip Span.
That price difference is fairly clear. No reason not to use Span here, so the recommendation is on the seal coat aggregate to utilize Span as our supplier.
I'll make a motion.
Motion's made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Fields. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number seven is award bid for Type A Flex Base Ash.
Now, this would not recommend except for Span, it would only be better to say, this is delivered price.
Delivered price, $15.75 from Span is the recommendation, only bidder.
Make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Fields.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, let's move on to equipment-related items. Number nine is open and review bids and possibly approve for...oh, I missed number eight. Flexible Base as opposed to Flex Base Ash. This is Flexible Base, and we had a couple of bidders on that, Martin Marietta and Span.
I would recommend except for Span, it would be low bidder.
Okay. Recommendation is...motion's made by Commissioner Parker. Seconded by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, we'll move on to equipment-related, and that's going to be a Used Smooth Drum Vibrator Soil Compactor. And how do we know that that's what this is for?
I don't know.
East Texas Truck Systems, do we have any idea what they'd be?
Water truck.
The water truck, so we don't have a bid, then? I'm going to just double-check that. Bid to be opened in court, 9:00 AM, two bid options are enclosed. Roger thinks this is for the water truck. I will verify that it's not related to that compactor. Yeah, this is a water truck. That's bid one, and yeah, two bids here, both for water trucks. I'll set that aside, so we don't have a bidder for the compactor, so where do we go from there?
So, we can't figure anything?
Don't have anything.
We did, okay.
Did you say Caterpillar?
Yes.
Holt.
And you didn't get any bids. You didn't show to me any.
That's so bad, we're not purchasing through them.
Do you think they understood that they needed to provide something else?
I'll find out to them if they have access to it.
Okay.
We have to believe. If Carl, we can reset it if we got here. That's going to be sent to your board.
To save time, if we find that they didn't send it and they need to get it to us, if I need to call a special meeting for Thursday afternoon just to speed things up, I will, so just let me know now.
I would ask Sheriff to double-check.
Reckon he might have brought it to James' office?
I think James would have brought it to us. Well, let's table item number nine. In the absence of anything, unless Carl finds something, we can come back. Need a motion to table number nine on the compactor. Motion, Commissioner Fields, to table.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll move to item number 10. This is for a used 2,000-gallon water truck, and I do have two options that are both provided by the same supplier, that is, East Texas Truck Systems. We have a 2,000-gallon water truck. The main differences, it looks like, are the chassis carrying that 2,000 gallon. One is a '94 International 8100 Cummins L10 engine with 124,000 miles. Price on that, $26,000 even. Says 10-speed transmission, 280 horsepower, tires 50% or better, air-conditioned, truck serviced. The second bid is for a '91 International 8100, 352,000 miles, 400 horsepower, manual transmission with the Cummins LTA 10. So, do you want to see these? Do you know specifically that you were considering both of these, or simply one of them, or you're not?
Full price.
No, I'm sorry, the second one, $24,950. $24,000, $950 compared to $26,000. Must be a superior truck, but it's got 200,000, 225,000 more miles on it, but it's a higher horsepower and a different engine.
So, happy? I don't know if they have the access to that. They sell it in the middle of the office, too.
Who was that from?
These are both from East Texas Truck Systems in Tyler.
I probably heard from that one.
Okay. All right. Let's have a motion to table this. Motion's made by Commissioner Fields to table pending Roger's examination of these two trucks that are provided by East Texas Truck Systems. Need a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is for an equipment trailer. Once again, we don't have a bid. Who were you expecting a bid from on that?
Blackwell, Ryder.
Blackwell, Ryder.
Yeah, Medway.
Okay. Well, again, if you re-contact these people and they're ready with something for us, and we need to put together a quick meeting to approve these, just let me know. But since there is nothing to consider, let's table item number 11. If I can get a motion on that.
I might get a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Parker to table decisions on the used equipment trailer.
Sure.
Seconded by Commissioner Fields. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then, lastly, on a used haul truck, no bids there. Let's table that, pending Roger's further review.
Make a motion.
Motion, Commissioner Fields.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, let's set this aside. Roger, is there anything else on here that has to do with you? I don't think so. Yeah, that's the only thing I saw on here. Any input on the tire relationship for removal of salvaged tires?
No, I guess...did you check on two or three people, or is it just...
Don't know. Don't know.
The tires?
Yeah, the tire shredder.
Yeah, I don't know the price of one. Here's where I am, the lady in Harrison County, she's applying for a grant for them to get one, but I thought I said last week, we need to go ahead and hire that guy that...
Yeah, so this decision really is to hire Benton Rainey to do the work for us. We're not to the point where we're ready to consider purchasing any kind of equipment.
Who should try to do that?
We're going to set that one aside. I'm just making sure there's nothing else here that I need to hold Roger for, and I don't see anything else. So, sorry we didn't get a bunch of bids for you.
Yeah.
Well, all right. Like I said, look into that and let me know. Can I give you these copies on the water truck?
You need to make copies for...
All right, let's move on. Item number 13. This is a presentation by what I refer to as NET RMA. This is the Northeast Texas Regional Mobility Authority, of which Titus County is a member, and we have local representation on this board by Hudson Old, and we have today the top brass from NET RMA, specifically Executive Director Chris Miller. And Chris, I'm going to let you introduce yourself, the folks that you have brought with you, and we appreciate you all taking time and heading up here and spending time with us, and helping these commissioners have a better understanding of who NET RMA is, and what is the reason that we are part of NET RMA.
I want to make a difference with my chair, Chairman Chair Linda Thomas.
All right, we'll let Linda begin, then. All right.
I know where the buck stops.
Well, I'm sure she'll turn the hard stuff over to you. The hard questions she'll give back to you.
Yes, I'm sure I'll be talking to her.
All right.
Good morning.
Ms. Thomas, thank you. You have the floor.
Thank you, Judge Lee. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Linda Thomas, Chair of Gray County of the NET RMA. We're pleased to be up here today to visit with our partners. We don't get to see each other near enough, but I...we are in contact with Judge Lee on a regular basis. I have our fairly new director, Chris Miller, who's our first executive director of the NET RMA, who's been with us almost a year, and the treasurer, who's a very, very important person on our board, who is Robert Messer in Kaufman County. So, I'm going to turn the microphone over to our executive director, Chris Miller. Thank you for letting us be here today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Certainly a pleasure to be here, and this is something that when I came on board... board, uh, I committed to get with every county, met with every judge in our county. Of course, we have a 12-county region and also then wanted to branch out to commissioners' course because I realized that, you know, commissioners also want to be able to feel that they're a part of this organization as well. And so, over the course of the last nine months, I started in September with every county, I've been trying to get to, to all the counties and, you know, schedule permission. So, certainly, again, a great opportunity to be here and, and what I'm going to do is just kind of walk you through a little bit of what's going on with the NET RMA. Uh, I've got two handouts that I provided to you, you all, uh, and, uh, go through that and certainly please ask any questions as we go along, any, any comments that you have. And then I think that there were some specific concerns about maybe our finances and where we are and where we think we're going to be. And so, Mr. Messer, who's our treasurer, is here to, to help you along with that and, and of course, you have Hudson Old as your local representative here, um, and he certainly has, I'm sure, some input that he'd probably like to provide as well, uh, you know, in terms of where the organization is going. Uh, let me just, first of all, uh, the first page of the little white handout, uh, you've got a, uh, just a, a little snapshot of the geography that we are dealing with. We have a, uh, a 12-county region, Titus being one of them. Uh, we go all the way up into Bowie County with Texarkana and we go all the way over to the Metroplex, on the east side of the Metroplex with Kaufman County, which is Roberts County. And then we go as far down to Cherokee County, which is Jacksonville and Rusk. So, we get around and, uh, this board is a, is one of the, uh, you know, most engaged boards I've worked with in terms of wanting to be involved in transportation, trying to stay on top of the transportation issues. Um, and so, we have, we have 19 members by organization. Now, currently, we're down a few members and so, we really only have, we have 15 currently, uh, that are on board. Uh, and, and the, the two founding counties of this organization were Smith and Gray and so, those two counties have three board members each. Of course, Ms. Thomas is appointed by the governor, just reappointed, right? For another six years? It's, she has a two-year cycle and, uh, but we're really excited about the fact that obviously she's on board and I am. I know, I know and I can figure that.
Are you actively soliciting more members? Are you at a point where you're comfortable with the number of counties that are, that are a, a part of NET RMA? You know, what's, what are expansion plans there, if any?
Well, it's a perfect time. Uh, just, just Friday, I emailed Camp County's judge, uh, Mr. Mason, a template resolution for them to initiate the process. And what will happen is they'll initiate, uh, an interest in joining the, the organization and then it'll kick it into the laps of the, of the board and the board has to make a decision if they want to take on another member and if they want to take on another member, do they want to take on another member county, which would then keep our, our numbers? We, we got to have a, a solid number of voting, uh, you know. So, Camp County would come in with one, um, and so, that would make it 20 and so, we'd have to either do, add another county to make it 21 or take away a voting membership from one of the existing counties and that would make it back to--
Chris, I've got a question. They're coming for the whole board, well, I think one of the committees that wants to decide whether or not--
Now, it comes, it comes for the whole board and it also comes before each commissioner's court.
Right, that's what I was going to mention, that every commissioner's court that's a member has to approve the acceptance of another county into it. So, yeah, there are some counties, if you look at, if you look at the map, where you can see there's some logic to them. Camp, uh, you know, I think Hopkins, uh, the Cass and Marion, uh, Raines County, there's some, there's some ones that are around here. You know, we've always thought about Henderson because it's close to the Toll 49 project. Uh, I know that the board in, in years past, Nagadocious, uh, I believe was interested and, uh, you know, so there's a, there's some opportunities there. Franklin would certainly be another one that could be looked at. But at some point, I think the board obviously wants to be able to provide, you know, an investment and, and provide something to the members, you know, the member counties. So, we have to be very careful, you know, we're not just going to add counties and then not be able to serve them. So, I think that's something that's a, that'll be a big debate that they'll, that they'll have here in a little bit when Camp County begins that process. Um, where I was again is, uh, you, Linda, of course, Ms. Thomas is the, is the governor of the appointment and she's obviously very connected with, with those folks and brings a lot of really valuable assistance in, in working with our legislators and working with a lot of the local elected officials and so, we're very excited about the fact that the structure of the RMAs is that you have a government appointment as your chair. And so, I think it's very important. I think one of the real hard things that, that this board deals with and, and all the counties deal with is that the board members cannot be affiliated with a government in any way. There are certain stipulations and limitations, if you will, on the kind of qualifications that you have to have if you're going to be a board member and it, it has come back and showed us in terms of trying to get some membership at some of the county levels. And so, that's something that when they set the NET, they set the RMA, uh, structure in place back in the early 2000s, they said you cannot have a, somebody that's affiliated with the government serve what you're for. And so, that, that is, you know, I think that's a struggle probably for, for us and for as many of the other RMAs out there. There are eight RMAs in the state. We're one of eight. One of the biggest one, obviously, if you drive in Austin, uh, it's a two-county one and that's, uh, the Central Texas RMA, CTRMA. Um, there's a number down on the border, uh, that are affiliated with counties and then there's one in El Paso that's affiliated with, uh, the, uh, the city of El Paso runs that one. And of course, really close by here is the one in Solder, uh, Solder Springs, it's up there, Solder River, RMA and, uh, you know, so essentially, they're kind of organized through the counties and then, uh, and then they can form an independent authority like we are. On the next page, you will see some of the things that we have the ability to do. Transportation facilities and services. You can finance, design, construct, operate, maintain and expand. Uh, potential projects are toll roads, obviously, that's what we have, and untold roads. And we can be involved in, you know, we can be involved in highways that are, that are not based on a toll revenue as a source of income. We can be involved in operation of ferry, airports, rail, bikeways, intermodal hubs, which are when you have a rail facility that comes in and then all of a sudden there's a trucking facility that takes what comes in on the rail. Those are those intermodal hubs where you have transit. Uh, a lot of downtown urban areas have those kind of arrangements where they have, uh, you know, the bus comes in, the person, uh, or drives to that area, it's a central area, that's an intermodal facility. We can be involved in those kind of things.
Chris, I wish to add something I like y'all be aware of, is that we can do water lines, we can do, we can do a railroad siding in industrial park, we could, uh, that, that list of stuff that he's asked there on the day. Airports, we don't need most of the airports and all that. But there are things that, that RMA can do that we're not doing, Chris, but we don't have any projects like that anywhere. And it's my whole set as, uh, as we move along and in short, where we start as an RMA, in our legislation, looking at helping communities with projects like that. I think that, as commissioners, you got to find my biggest business or my common challenge and go there, why not? I think we can get electric lines as well and then get electric--
But those kind of requests really need to come from the county. I mean, it's not up to you guys to generate ideas for our benefit. We need to be the ones bringing those ideas to you.
And that's what, that's what I want you guys to be aware of that. We, I don't think we're done as an RMA. We haven't really pushed that idea out there. I'm sure we're not doing any of that. But we can do that and we can also, here, here's the thing about it, we can toll that service that Robert, y'all break me about. Basically, like if a city, they can build a sewer line out somewhere, the city could work through the county, we could finance the deal, what RMA would want in retirement of Robert's kids, Russell could franchise there or RMA pay for however long it took to pay off that line.
I think the key thing of what Mr. Old was talking about is that the RMAs have the ability to do bonded indebtedness and obviously so do counties and municipalities and things like that, but there's limits. And so, an RMA comes along and can do certain things that maybe are outside of what the county can do and so, I think what, what Mr. Old was talking about is there's that opportunity to maybe do some creative things that maybe don't exist at, at the county level.
But the assumption there would be that there needs to be revenue coming in.
There's got to be some kind of a source that the rep, that you can sell those bonds on. I mean--
No, but that doesn't have to be just bonded revenue. Have you looked at that elsewhere?
No, it doesn't have to be bonded. It could be, uh, it could be other fine ways of doing things.
I think that there's a, there's some sort of toll pre-associating with, with, over a period of time.
We're legal to have a project, you could--
But typically for projects of a big nature, you're going to be looking at some kind of farm. I mean, you know, we don't have--
Let, let's let Chris go on. John, if you've got any comments, I, I want to hear them and I know these guys want to hear them, but just in the, in the name of time.
The next page, I think, will, will even highlight on the top, there's a, there's a page, page three. You've got the differences between a Tech Dot type project, what Tech Dot's authority is and what an RMA authority is. It's a matrix, it's kind of small, but you can kind of go down and you can see where it's checked. Basically, we can do those things. Uh, and, and where you see there are gaps in what Tech Dot can do. Uh, and Tech Dot knows a heck of a lot and, and we know that they do a really good job with what they can do, but here's an opportunity, I think, when, when this legislation was created back in the 2000s was how could you advance your transportation funding or your transportation, uh, projects even further by having the RMAs create it? So, you, you, now you've kind of got a little bit of lay of the land. What, what, what has been the focus, obviously, of this organization has been Toll 49. Now, they have been working and I think finally, uh, in the last two years, you are seeing the realization of what the board has been working on, which is trying to return the investment to the member counties and Judge, Judge Lee was, uh, two weeks ago, was at Upsher County at that presentation where they were trying to, you know, the board is trying to turn money back to the counties in the form of what we call priority projects to help the county with some type of a transportation project. And I'll get into that in a second, but essentially what this board has been so focused on, I think, over the last several years, uh, has been Toll 49 operation. Now, Toll 49 is a, is a two-lane highway, um, that goes around the outside of Tyler. Uh, if you haven't had a chance to ride on it, encourage you to do so. Uh, it's, uh, it runs from I-20 south to what we call, if you're not familiar with the area, South State Highway 110, which is the true highway, which is on the southeast side of, of Tyler. The ultimate plan is, is that it'll one day, um, go up towards 271, uh, as it's south of the UT Northeast Health Center and then it'll, then, then the plan ultimately is what we call the East Texas Hourglass, will be certain segments that will go, uh, from Gilmore, or excuse me, Gilmer, east ultimately to Harrison County tying in with the I-69 corridor that's being developed.
So, we've got really a long way to go before you see 49 achieve the end goal.
Right. The next, what, what's currently happening right now with 49 is, um, is segment four, well, let me look, let me turn your attention to page four, which is the bottom, which will show you, the bottom of page four will show you the, uh, what we call the NET, the, it's the East Texas Hourglass. And you can see the map of Smith County, you can see in the, in the light blue is, is the existing road. It's kind of like a fish hook, like a, like a backwards fish hook. And then there's some light green shaded, uh, that is the next segment. The next segment that, um, is being planned is called Seg, we call it Segment Six, which is essentially the completion of the loop around Tyler. Now, currently, under construction is what we call the Lyndale Relief Route, which is running north of I-20 around the, around the city of Lyndale and tying in to Highway 69, essentially two miles north of, of, uh, Lyndale, which will bring all the northern traffic from like Wood County and some of the other counties down and then they'll have the ability to utilize, um, a toll road that will get traffic, uh, to and from I-20 and east and west.
Does it terminate there or is there any anticipation?
Now, the plan is, is that it'll terminate there. That will be essentially when we start, we will start signing everything from that point on and that will be the beginning of it and it'll--
That'll be, that'll be the western end of it.
Yes.
Okay.
But then you see that the, the ultimate plan is to go up and, and hit the, you go up above Gilmer and you cross at the, you go east out of Gilmer and you then ultimately tie into Harrison County in the yellow and that's the ultimate East Texas Hourglass. And that's a long way off, but you know, with the way transportation funding goes, you got to be working on it. And we're working on six, we're working on the southeast loop to complete the south and the eastern loop around Tyler. We're working on that right now and also going to be working on what we call Segment Seven, which is the, the little shaded purple that goes from Gilmer east. And that's the kind of timeframe that's involved in it. They've been, you know, there are studies that were done for all of this that, that, you know, identify a kind of a right of way and in fact, I think that the, we call it Segment Seven, which is the, uh, the one that's in Gray County and Upsher County and then further east. I think that will have to be moved a couple of times because they, where they had it originally located was in a pretty productive oil field and the right of way is the issue there.
Well, you're talking about tying into Gilmer. It really doesn't tie into Gilmer from what I'm seeing. Is there something--
What it does is it goes, it follows basically 271. So, it's Glade Water essentially is one of the, the main areas and so, uh, that's why I think the 271--
Which is, which is going to be one of our main questions is tell us about 271 and how 271 can tie into this. Do you anticipate that everything we're looking at here will be a toll road or not necessarily?
It depends. It really depends. It has to, you have to, to sell bonds, you've got to prove to the future bondholders that the project is what's known as toll viable. That means you've got to do a study that's going to look at your traffic patterns, that's going to look at the, the amount of activity that's going to populate over time so that you can justify to the, the banks and, and you know, that, that you're going to have a revenue source. And so, uh, every one of these segments that are exist, you know, the existing parts of the road have had a full study and analysis done of the long-term financing and, and the long-term revenue growth that you would have, uh, you know, generated over time. So, yes, all those, and so, it doesn't mean that it's a toll road, but it means that we can, that, you know, this organization wants to be involved some way in making sure that this East Texas Hourglass happens.
Well, either, either you're going to make some or all of this a toll road or you're going to be putting the burden of that on your existing revenues that are coming in from the existing toll road. So, um, either there's got to be new sources of funds or you're going to tap out all the available monies that you've got here that are currently coming in on, on 49.
Well, and that is, that's something that we have to look at with these, with these existing, these more, uh, I guess, earlier segments that are going to come on in the future, like six. We, we have to look how much of the existing-- We, we have to look how much of the existing revenue sources being generated on toll 49 are going to be maybe tapped into, as you said.
If I could offer a comment too, from a financial perspective, it's really not reasonable to think the toll road around Tyler, toll, toll transportation project in East Texas, there's not going to be that much cash flow. I think one of the things we can debate at the board level is where can we go from those? And the thing that we feel looking forward, maybe we can go with additional cash, new planning, or some sort of studies that cause a project to move along. Maybe not the construction, but we could let Tech Dot or somebody like that to build it. But many times, just an additional seed money that might not be really available to our members, if we can provide that, we really can create something that's more regional than just local. So it'll really be a toll that avenue if we do a financial.
Okay, Robert, elaborate on that. You said that it's not reasonable to expect that there's enough revenue here to service these, these others. And I guess in a minute, you'll tell us more about what you've got, your projections here on available monies coming out of the existing toll road 49. And you're saying that can't be where revenue sources end. We've got to have additional revenue sources for the future viability of net RMA so that some of that money can be available that will help out areas closer to what we're interested in, like 271.
Yeah, let me talk about something that's closer to me. That's how the 34th, if we call it in here. If we were to upgrade it suddenly, we'd block five of our, but right now it's a state highway. It's, we don't have the money for the toll road in Tyler to rebuild 34 with Carroll calling. But perhaps if our county needs some assistance with some funding or some studies or something would be helpful, because it is a important region we're at, perhaps we can help with that. But all of us have our state highway 34s and think a lot of money's been on. And that's why I said the toll road around Carroll, speaking of Tyler, it's not going to finance everything that they have in East Texas. Does that make sense what I'm trying to say?
No, yeah, but didn't you say earlier that it had to be a revenue-producing project, everything that you do?
Not necessarily. And let me, let me tell you about that here in a second. Well, I'll go ahead and answer that. The, the thing that we're doing right now, the board has spent many years working on this. And last year, they gave, they awarded Gray County $400,000 for a project that's to relieve congestion, fix a serious flaw in, in the road that was, you know, will lead to some better economic activity in the area. And so this year, the board upped the ante, went to $500,000, and they divided that among three counties. One of them was Coffin County, gave them some money to fix some, a road there in their county. And then we did the biggest one, and by far, probably the one that'll impact this area the most, is, is to help contribute to the, to a study that's going to be going on in Gilmer about a loop around Gilmer. We gave $250,000, and that's the one that Judge Lee was participating in. Those projects are not necessarily returning revenue for us, but they have the ability to enhance the economic development opportunities in a particular county. They have the opportunity to improve the, you know, the whole transportation structure in that particular county. So not all projects have to have a revenue source. Projects that we have to, that we would have to bond, that we would have to go and go to the financing market on, we've got to have some kind of a source of revenue. I think that's where Hudson was saying, that if you did, if you did a water line, could you capture some of the revenue that comes off of that water, that water? If you do something associated with electric or gas utilities, then some fraction or some amount of the franchise that's on that would have to come to us or be pledged to us so that we could then take it to the bond market and show them that, you know, this is how it's going to work if we were going to be involved in a big project.
For example, how about 34? The North Texas Reasonability Authority could provide Coffin County some funds to do environmental studies or some sort of planning of that. If they would like for us to build the road between Carroll and Coffin, that would be toll, because that's the only question we can pay for. So if you will, and you guys would not be surprised, Hudson and I don't agree about everything, but we do have lots of comments. I think one of the things we argue very diligently around the board table is we want our money to go with things for both regional transportation. And right now, for my mind, I don't know how you feel, that looks a whole lot like providing some planning money for some seed money to get things started. That's really, I think, we think regionally, I don't know how you feel, I think that's where our money could be well spent.
I bet. That counts. Two things. Robert and I really do agree on, and I've been watching him from the time he's been on this board, we need to be a regional voice. We've been, and we've gotten one for the last 10 years, and so the top's kind of been a member. That's going to lack all of our folks that are toll warning that. And Al referenced your question. I mean, that chart that I got to give the actual, if you look at last pile of ads, there's billions of dollars there here. Look, it sounds like a lot of money, but in terms of road construction, it's like Robert was saying, RMA isn't going to fund construction on a big highway around there. But like Gilmer, what we can do is get, the whole objective in Gilmer, getting these building studies that look, what's to get a line of the map, what's to get Tech Dot to say, you know, this is the project we need to do. It wasn't only, and the significance of 271, I know it's jumping around a bit, but to us, it's a reasonable thoroughfare that Tech Dot's identified as a emergency right order. So the more developed we get on 271, and the faster, the more it's going to help economic development, all of them have a line. That's something that I'd like to see RMA taking action, part of it. The only other point that I will make about what's been said so far, on these projects, like when you talk about a municipal water line, and you say bond, there is enough money. Again, if you look at that last pile of millions of dollars that's in there, there is enough money, in my mind, to trigger some of those projects. For example, in Wood County, we recently gave them like 70 grand. They had a big chicken plant that was waiting for a water line. And we put in what, 70,000? I thought it was 880,000. Okay. But anyways, we were looking at a little bit of money on million-dollar projects, and then the chicken plant that gave water in the city, that was enough to start some catalyst to get that going. So I think that given the amount of money, again, looking at last pile and looking at futures, I think there's enough money that we really could become a regional help in that way.
Just let me remind commissioners, you know, a year ago, we submitted a project to get some money from net RMA to complete, not to complete, but to add to the project costs on the, on the college road. And we were considered favorably. We missed out to the, to the project in Greg County, but hey, we gave it our best shot. We came back this year, and because Tech Dot was not of the same frame of mind that they were a year ago, and they were not ready to move forward on that project as they were a year before, and since we did not have a, a good project, I felt, to submit, we threw our support to Gilmer because they're seriously considering and would like to have, and as you all know, need a loop around Gilmer. And that indirectly would help us, who are also on 271. And Gilmer was successful in getting 225, $250,000 that will go toward that study to get a loop around Gilmer. So may not have been an absolute direct win for Titus County. It was an indirect win for Titus County. But again, I wanted you to be able to equate those things that, that this court has been participating in with net RMA.
I think that, oh, go ahead.
On 271, whatever happens along the 271 route is going to benefit the whole region. And that's where we get into what's important for what you've made so already, because you all focused on your county, and every county does, every town does. We are able to reach across city, county, state lines for projects. 271 is not the toll road. We can't toll an already existing road. The way, reason that 271 becomes very attractive to connect one part of the toll 49 to the other part is the fact that it's already a four-lane road right now divided into a lot of lanes. And so with more traffic, which will be generated going north, it puts some additional pressure to, we can say anything about Tech Dot's funds that are available, just to be used in, no restrictions as we can. So instead of having that toll road, you hire one, which would really slow down the process, and we're able to use an existing road and the encouragement to Tech Dot, some support, we'd be able to make that road better, and what was there on there, on there that connected with the toll road and the special case of that.
Yeah, and that, and that 271 study for that loop around Gilmer is a very effective use of net RMA money. And, and I hope that there will be other opportunities to throw some emphasis towards 271. I mean, I'd like to see that, that loop become a reality in the years ahead, but 271 is the major, the way I see it, the, one of the major north-south routes within this net RMA. We've got 49 is handling a, is a significant east-west route. 271's a significant north-south route. I appreciate the contribution that you've made toward that, and look forward to 271 continuing to, to get attention by net RMA.
One of the, there are eight other projects. What RMA successfully lobbied, because we joined seven counties, we all came up with resolutions, which boy, Tech Dot finished, worked on 271. Mr. Austin, Jeff Austin, who was part of RMA, went to 400,000 on Tech Dot, worked to fill the resolution, successfully lobbied for Tech Dot to get the southern end of 271 that was needed on the toll 49 project, successfully got that project advanced. So now one of the questions that I, RMA answered throughout our court this morning, when we lobbied to get seven other counties to back that project, we sold nine other projects on 271. One of them's west of north of Mount Hood, Fort Cal, buying that road. So my questions are up there, is what RMA might do to help us advance the other projects around 271?
Thank you, sir.
I don't think it's very hard to ask the question, Robert, but thank you, everybody.
Now, how come I have to stand up here, Dr. Cody, when you asked a hard question?
Well, that's the bottom line. That's regional, we've got it up there. What are we getting out of this deal? I mean, I want to say that they're regional boys. Two things. Are we really getting serious about being a regional voice and representing all counties? And another thing they've told us that actually, a lot of money available for the sort of regional planning out there that they're blocking on that. Again, there's not enough money built, though, because they're sure enough for us to make it our, our mission statement says we'll build transportation projects while the economy goes. That's why we need to be thinking.
Well, let me, let me answer that.
271, people.
Go ahead, Chris. Let me answer that in two ways. First of all, in 271, I think that you, you all were, one of the counties that participated in, in a resolution that then went to the Texas Transportation Commission. And the, you know, the effort that was, that that produced, the reward is that 271 south of Glade Water, which is a major part of 271 work, that was advanced three years. You know, all the activity north of 271 is very important. And I know that, that the, you know, the Atlanta district, which represents this area of, of Tech Dot, they're pushing for projects as well. They have some in here, but they don't have any that are defined in terms of a, you know, specific timeframe. Our job's going to be.
Well, we care about the plan. I think, that's the plan.
What I, what I'm saying is, is that they're not, those are in their timelines, but they're not committed like the stuff south of 271.
It's committed now since we, since we got the resolution of counties. So that was, what are we going to advance on, for, those projects are defined on 271. They're north of Glade Water, north of Mount Hood. What's, what's, what can RMA do to that?
The RMA will continue to, to work with the Texas Transportation Commission, specifically Commissioner Austin, who represents us in this area, in terms of trying to get this into what's known as the Uniform Transportation Plan, UTP. That's Tech Dot. Everything's funded.
Hudson, let's let Chris finish.
Once, once you get into the, once a project gets into the UTP, it's funded. And they're, they've committed. You know, you can have five-year, they have five-year plans, they have 35-year plans, 40-year plans, all those kind of things. Once you get in the UTP, you're funded. And so that work that's south of Glade Water accelerated three years is in the, is in their update that came from February. The next update that's coming will be in August. We'll be in contact, encouraging them to do whatever they can to get these projects in, in, you know, north of Glade Water, north of Gilmer, that kind of stuff funded. What can the RMA continue to do? On, on 271, it's don't give up because it's not done yet. And I mean, obviously, transportation planning is, is a long, long-term process. There are people that in this room that may have been working on something for 20, 30 years. You know, it's what I understand, when I came here to, when I moved to, to, to come into this position, the toll 49 started in 1984 as a loop around Tyler. And now it's finally come about. There are people, Baron Bulmer, who's on our board, was, was a part of the chamber group that started that. And so these are long-term projects, and will continue, I know that the board wants to continue to work on 271 and not just let it be done. So it's going to require advocacy, it's going to require push, probably coming back to county commissioner meeting, court meetings, and asking for more support, things like that. What can we do, though, in terms of other projects? I think you're seeing that with these priority projects. I think, as you, as you indicated, Judge Lee, that the, the Gilmer loop is a great example of a project that could have a benefit to a lot of different areas, not just Gilmer. And, and so that's the kind of project that these, that the RMA wants to be involved. These board members have been working for years trying to get where they felt comfortable financially to return that investment back to this, to this 12-county region. And you see the, I think the, the fruits are there, and we're going into budget here in another month, and I'm sure that that's going to be a real good discussion at the board meeting, is what do they want to do about what we call these priority projects, these, these county projects that we return the money to? How much are they going to want to invest in? You know, that's something that Robert, his treasurer, is going to be really examining, how much, you know, are, are we comfortable with in terms of taking off of the existing revenue? And you've got to remember that, here's an example. If, if toll 49 didn't exist, there's no ability to do this. And for example, in Sulphur River, they don't have a project. They don't have a project that generates any income. And so they're really more of a coordinating, a more of a planning entity, things like that. They might work, I guess they work with the Tech Dot folks in terms of maybe helping coordinate projects. But that's where we don't want to be like that. And we want to obviously utilize the resources that exist to try to spread them out. I think another way that the RMA helps out, its partners with, you know, the county partners, is we're going to put on in September a, a regional transportation forum that's going to connect you with city folks, going to connect you with legislative folks. We're going to have Texas Transportation Commissioner Austin there and another commissioner from the Dallas area. So there's going to be some opportunity for dialogue to continue to talk about rural transportation and the needs for projects. And, and it's not just about toll 49. We understand that. I think that if there's any one board member I have who, who drills it into the head of the board members every meeting, it's Hudson, that we are more than just toll 49. We are a organization that represents 12 counties, 11 other counties than Smith County we represent. And so my job is to get out and to find out what the projects are, stay, stay abreast of that, keep you informed, work with all the individual board members on trying to find a way that we can be involved. And I think that there is a real serious commitment on the board to be more than just a toll road. And, and I think you've seen.
So the continuation of the priority projects is the plan?
That is a plan, yes.
You'll solicit those projects and, you know, you give us a, you know, an opportunity at least annually? at least annually here, perhaps, hopefully that.
And we have a, we have a committee of board members, it's called our Long Range Planning Committee, and they will start the process here in a couple of months again, they'll analyze, you know, is there a different way they can do these things? I think that, you know, Hudson talked about, you know, rail projects. There, to me, the sky is the limit, in the sense of how we can do some things. You know, we could look at multiple county projects. You know, are there, it's like they're a rail switch, or is there a, that generates, that benefits three or four counties? That's something that the board would probably be excited about, to be involved in. So like I said, the sky's the limit, and I think we have an opportunity to continue to be a resource for this region.
We'll continue on with your handout here. You've got some stuff here that I'd like, yeah, I'd like you to be able to cover.
Okay, let me briefly, oh, well, I'll be a little off at some point here, talk about finances, but the, I will say, the end of the presentation that I have is, focuses on what we call the Lindale Relief Route, which is on top of page five, page five, and that is the one that's going around Lindale. And that one is, if you have been east, excuse me, if you've been west on 20 from here, or you're coming back from Dallas and you're going, you know, coming east on 20, you see the big bridge spans, that's what we call segment four, and that's gonna, gonna basically, the existing toll road will go right over I-20, and it'll continue north, and kind of north and east, and ultimately it'll go in about two miles north of Lindale, about six and a half miles. And it is due to be completed sometime, we set summer of 2018, that's our goal, but I think we're looking more like early fall, mid-fall for 2018. And that's gonna be, that's gonna open up this northern area to, to that kind of traffic that can be on the, on the road. Then, then I look on the bottom, if you look on the bottom of page five, we're talking about those priority projects, and that, just keep in mind, we, I mean, we could call it something else, but when you say priority project, that is the investment that this board is returning back to its member counties, for being a part of it, being a loyal, you know, and a loyal member, supporting us. And what essentially we did, we allot a certain amount of money each year, and that money goes to a project. And you can see, there's a sample of questions on page six, and, you know, like Hudson said, we, economic development is one real important facet to it. The other one is, is that we like to see that there's a, it's a joint type of a project, it's gonna, you know, have the support of the city, or have the support of the county, or a school district, or, you know, it's gonna have the support of text dot, those kind of things. Really, our only limitation is that the project that we are like a, we are a, we're a leper, if you will. We come in, we're gonna help that project out, and there's gonna be some other partners and things like that. So like in the Gilmer loop, we know that Gilmer's gonna be having to look to some other resources. $250,000 is gonna get them some way down the line, but there's obviously gonna be some other resources that come into it.
How do you determine how much money is available each year for these priority projects?
The budget, they go into the budget, and they just determine that they feel comfortable, they'll look.
That's a board decision, or a finance committee decision?
Yes, it's a, it's a board decision. They look at their, what we think the cash flow is gonna be, and the comfort level is really where it comes down to. And I think what they did is they, this last year, in 2016, they gave $400,000. That was a combination of two years' worth of saving, $200,000 each year. And so this last year, for this year, excuse me, this last budget year, they dedicated $500,000. And then what happens is it goes before the projects are submitted to the committee, the committee of board members goes and scores it, and then that's where they came in with the top three this last time. We had eight, I think, eight projects this last time, and so they scored the top three. And, you know, each year, like I said, the board, the members of the committee really are looking at projects that are, I mean, every, every project's valuable to each county, it's just some rise to the top and some.
Okay. I've got, I've got about five minutes that I can allocate on this, Robert. But we do want to hear from you.
I think you have two cash flows in charge. One was a part of the package for our bonded debt, and we get that here, but the other is a shorter-term value projection. Of course, that's really what we look at, is a shorter-term, I hope those long-term numbers aren't about to do notes. We have about $20 million in cash right now, which, we're pretty flush with cash. Here, we decided, and we needed to make about $14 million in improvements for our district toll. So we have about $6 million that is not obligated for some current event that's going on. We really think it would be improved if it dropped below that. So six of it is about where we are. We do think that our cash flow will improve with Lindale Relief Route was up, but that's still about 18 months off, so we want to kind of see how that plays out. We're pretty optimistic about that, and we're on track to meet the cash flow projection that you see in the package. I think one of the key decisions we made, though, is that we're gonna spend our cash flow in arrears. We're kind of, kind of make it, and then we'll give it away. So I do think that we'll have increases, whether you're on our priority project funding. I don't know that it'll be significant, or what we've done in previous years, but if we do continue to see the cash flow come in as we have and as we expect to, I think we could be more aggressive in funding very important things that need to happen regionally in transportation. I don't know what questions you might have about our finances, or where we are, or what our plans are, but I'll be glad to answer those, and I understand we're running close on time. So questions that you might have about the financial perspective of the Regional Ability Authority?
Where does this money come from?
The money comes from toll revenues. Keep in mind, I guess, one of the outliers, we are a nonprofit. The only person here that's even paid anything is Chris. The rest of us are volunteers. Any excess cash, any excess equity belongs, if you will, to the member counties. In the event the Regional Ability Authority went away, the counties, the member counties, would have to decide if they wanted to make toll 49 free, or if they wanted to continue to charge and do something else. So it's your money that is accumulating in our cash balance, but the source of our income revenue are tolls along 49. Now, we did receive a $4 billion grant from the state to help us with our construction, and that is part of our revenues that we recognize this year, but our main cash sources of revenue, and we use that to retire bonded indebtedness that we incurred to construction that can afford. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, it answered my question.
I mean, there's a, there's a nominal contribution that each county makes to the cost, but, but the real revenue generator is that, is that toll road.
Last year, not asking for a contribution from the county, honestly, we feel like our people are more engaged if they have some stake in the game. We feel like that's up to the engagement.
If you go up toward Lindale, of course, I care about Mount Pleasant. If you're going toward Greenville, you're gonna, you're gonna be north of, west of us, and this toll road going up that way, Tyler, those towns in there, Minneola, those are gonna get in line for that. All we, Gilmer, will get a little nibble, huh?
Sure. It's like I told the guys when I joined the board three years ago, if all we're gonna do is a toll road around Tyler, you don't need coffee canning to do that. I think that we have to expand our vision to be more regional, or it's only a toll road. So I am only involved, only, only given the volunteer hours I do, but I really believe we need something to tie our reason together, and we have to look at transportation from a regional perspective. So I would share here the chart, if all we're gonna do is that, well, those guys down there can take care of it. We need to collaborate with you guys, and we need to know what we can do to be helpful to you. If it's seed money, or if it's, if it's, nobody's listening to toll roads these days in Austin, so I don't know if we have any political ability to help, but we need to know what we can do to help you, because that's the reason I'm involved, because I believe it's important in general for transportation to be effective around Mount Pleasant.
I'd like to know if, has there been any money allocated for any of these other projects, like, like we've talked about, about the rail, the water, the electricity? Has there been anything allocated for that in any region?
It's kind of a chicken and egg, what comes first, the funding or the project? The thing that we believe to be true is we can increase our public awareness, and public being guys like you, you can help us find projects that we can get behind. It's hard for, from our seat in Tyler, to be driving what needs to happen in Mount Pleasant. So if you have a rail project, if you have a water line, or what you may have, we need, we really would appreciate you asking us to see if we could collaborate and be more successful. So we don't just set aside anything monthly, but we're looking for a project to fund.
Thank you. Hudson, you've served now how many years? Eight, eight years?
What, 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 I was speaking out to somebody with the guys on Net RMA, because in my knowledge, we had no active plan out now to approach text dot during this always hearing concerning the Unified Transportation Plan. But what you guys need to understand, that's real significant, is in February, text dot had a hearing, and we went to them to talk about the Unified Transportation Plan, and we got $45 million written down to take care of 271, where it connects the toll 49 project. And actually, that accomplished, I don't think we have any further plans, specifically at that point, to speak to text dot in behalf of the other eight projects listed that all these guys signed off. So I guess I challenge us to be proactive in some way, to see if we can get that done.
I don't think it was part of the package that went to the commissioner. I don't know that, I mean, we need to, if the board wants to mitigate, Commissioner Austin, well, that certainly has to be board, but that package went to them, and that, that exists in there of the right.
And when that package went over, we could have gotten what's all 49.
No, it included all the north construction, all the resolutions.
And showed it out in the map. Were you there? Oh, was he? I want to, were you there? Yeah, what? Far down there north, power of Glade Water, US Attorney.
You talked about Austin.
Yes.
Part of the commission meeting, I guess.
I, I think we're about out of time, but I think the thing I would like to say is, we really need to collaborate more together for regional, because I think we have to play together.
Okay. Thank you all very much. I've got a question from the audience, Sue.
I have several questions that are running through my mind, but number one, since grants are no longer available, that was a primary source of revenue, how are you even going to consider new toll projects? Because there really isn't the money available anymore, and you now have to repay text dot for any loans. I mean, that was the new bill. I think it was SB 312 that the governor just signed, that these will, things will have to be repaid. So I have a lot of questions going through my mind, and that was to eliminate this double taxation, where we build roads with our tax money, and then we need to pay the ride home with the tolls. And that was, that, you know, was what the bill was all about. Secondly, there was another $5 billion put into the existing text dot budget, new money, that's over $20 billion that they had this year, new money, $5 billion, we put it into the budget for the ensuing, for the next year, I mean, that very soon. And that has a designated amount of money for rural development. So, well, what is the point of an RMA? Do we really even need one? We need to be, we need to be proactive with text dot. Now, I listened to your, your comments about the other projects, and that sounds, you know, the rail, the water, the, I'm on board with that, that most of this money so far is going to toll 49. And, you know, there are just a lot of questions that are running through my mind right now. And we should be proactive in terms of getting some of that new money, that $5 billion, that the state is now allocated in the new budget. And the governor signed that law, so if we pay all of these loans, it's gonna be nothing else to do.
I think you might have to ask the board.
Okay, we're gonna wrap up here.
I can answer that very quickly if you, for, for, for.
Don't worry, we have a ceremony.
I would be, I would be happy to also.
All this is going on.
Well, you have a lot of questions, and I know the board will have time, but I'll be happy to talk you up here. One, we owe text dot, that's, the board was fortunate to receive a grant that paid off text dot's portion of that road years ago. Text dot and the Net RMA, there's no relationship financially. What Robert talks about is, the revenue that exists is all generated by the toll road. So if you never ride on the toll road, you're not paying for that road. You understand? You're not paying for, you're not paying for us through tax dollars or.
I understand it completely, but the tax money, you built the road to begin with, and then we get, get to take the drive. That's double tax.
I, I would agree with that. The other thing is, I would point out, text dot also has made, the Texas Transportation Commission gave a policy that they are not going to give grants to RMA's. So we can't get text dot money in the form of a grant. Now, you can loan, you can go through loans from text dot, all their loan programs, financing programs, but you can't get a actual grant that's gonna pay for a toll.
Thank you.
I was about, let me say one thing.
One thing. I got 30 seconds.
The toll road's not totally financed with tax, with the grant, it has a loan against, we paid that loan off. We can't debate whether there's toll roads or not, that's somebody else is gonna debate that. We're volunteers, we have a cash flow, we're regional, we want to be helpful. If the state outlaws us and we go away, we'll, I'll go do something else. Thank you for your time.
Thank you all, I appreciate it. Thanks for all the. Commissioners, I'll give you just a second.
I need more than a second.
Well, we'll pick it up at another meeting.
I just wanna, I just wanna say, I appreciate y'all being here. Hudson, I appreciate you letting us know that they were coming. You know, we all have our goals, and we all have our, what we'd like to see done. You know, one of the main goals I would love to see done is 1735 going to the college. It's not a big project, but it's very important, because we have a lot of kids going out there. We lost three kids, and went in there, the county decided to go in, step up, buy the houses, and buy the land, and put in turning lanes and things like this, and since then we hadn't had a student killed going to the college out there. But we're growing, there's a lot of traffic on that road, and that's a project that I know we were in the running for, for Greg County, and I know you were pushing it, and I greatly appreciate that. I talked, I visited with text dot, and I said, and right now, the plans are 21. Well, a few years ago, it was in 18, and it keeps seeing things push back and push back. I don't know what we can do as an organization group, but anything y'all can do to help us promote that and push it, or if you need us to come to Austin and talk to people. In 1995, I bet I made six, seven, eight trips that year to go down and talk with text dot, visit with them on our bypass project. And you're right, it takes years, it takes years to get things done. That was in 95. We finished this project two years ago, and there's no doubt in my mind, Titus County's gonna continue to grow. We were, 30 years ago, we were 16,000 people, we're 34,000 people in this county right now. So we are growing. Mobility, be able to move from point A to point B is a key, and I love the idea with Gilmer on the bypass, because that's gonna, and, and try people to come this way, to use this area. The bypass around, because it really bottlenecked right in there, and widening two lanes, four lanes in Glade Water, and we need to continue to try to keep going on. Those are two big projects. That's special to me, because of Titus County, and where we're located, and where we're at. So he just told me to be quiet, so.
Well, I've got an 11 o'clock meeting with Carl and our bond refinance guys, and I don't want to miss that meeting. So it's, normally I'd let us go till noon, you know, or beyond, but this is, we'll, we'll need to have you all up here more. There's obviously interest here, there's interest here, there's interest out in the audience, and at least we have some faces and names, and we'll, we'll be more plugged in. But thank you all for taking your time to come up here and bring what you brought to us, and getting us better informed, and thank you, Hudson, for continuing to serve. You know, Hudson's a volunteer on this deal, remember that, he's served on this deal for years, and he does spend a lot of time on this, so express your thanks to Hudson. Thank you all. We'll move on to our next item, and this is to discuss and possibly take action on the modification of lease terms on the WIT building. At our last meeting, as you will recall, we. At our last meeting, as you will recall, we made an agreement with Print Works for the utilization of that WIT building. And since that time, Print Works has gotten some firmer bids, well, some firm bids. They're working with David Edwards, and I met with them last week, and we looked at some very specific needs over there in that building, and they go beyond what was originally anticipated. And John Bratcher is here today, if we would like to get any comments from him, but I have provided you with some, a couple of sheets here. One gives total price of $35,503 is going to be what it's going to cost in order to get done what needs to be done. And that's significantly beyond the figure that was closer to $10,000 that we talked about, that we were going to utilize contributions by Print Works and contributions by Titus County. And so Print Works has come back to us and said, you know what, for us to make this work, we need the county to consider some additional commitment here. And as you can see there, what they are asking for originally was to, for the county to replace those two west windows with the good, those are large, single pane windows with low E glass in them, and probably argon filled or something like that, but they need to be a well-insulated first quality window to help bear some of that western heat, and then we were going to contribute $2,000. We've come up with some additional requests here that Print Works is submitting to the court for your consideration. The original mini-split air conditioner is not going to take care of that tall roof over there, and that 1,400 square feet, and the consideration now is for a full four-ton unit, air conditioning unit, rather than that mini-split. A smaller unit, three, three and a half, was considered, but four tons appears to be what is needed there, along with some insulation in the roof, that'll come in the form of just some batts being attached into that very top portion of the roof there to provide some protection from that heat that'll eat up some of that air conditioning. And then the outside electrical really needs a haircut outside there. There's a lot of unnecessary boxes and wires that are not doing anything other than getting in the way, and the electric service into that building was basically chopped off with an ax, so there's nothing coming in there in the way of electrical service. So that is an unanticipated expense to get the electricity right. In my opinion, after studying this, what they are asking for, and I'll tell you in a minute what they're willing to contribute, and it far exceeds what their original commitment was, but the things that I see the county is being asked for are components of that building that will make this building usable by the county for a number of different purposes. We'll have a full capable air conditioning system, we'll have insulation in the roof, we'll have new electrical service on the outside, and we'll have full electrical supply on the inside with conduit, et cetera, so that when Print Works is done with that building, we now have a building that's functional with the bathroom, with the electrical, with the insulation, and with the air conditioning. Now, yes, it is a significant more contribution that is being asked for from the county. Print Works, as you can see there on the right side, is looking at about $21,000 of this $35,000 job, and that's more than double what their original commitment was. So John, would you, do you have anything else that you'd like to say, or commissioners, if you want to ask John anything? The bottom line is, this is a more expensive project than was originally thought. Once we got David Edwards in there, who really put a pencil to this and identified every single component that needed to be done to get that building usable, it just exceeded what the original anticipation was. And so they're bearing the brunt of these additional costs, but they are asking the county for further commitment. So John, anything you want to add to that?
No, just, we got Eddie Parrott down there, and there were a couple things, insulation was part of the code, we didn't really see that, you know, ahead of time. And then the firewall, which is a minor, 2,000, not minor in my book, but still, there was some firewall, I think, that he was really concerned with. He gave a couple concessions too. There were some other things that he said, you know, he really wanted to be kind of stickler to it, he could probably do, but he was.
He's talking about Eddie Parrott, the city code inspector.
So he was working with us and said, really, really quick, get that insulation fixed from the top, and have more of a state code. And then the, there's a couple breaches in that firewall, the double probation, I think, next door, so that was his big concern. So that's kind of what we're seeing on both parts of there, so. And then obviously, the half of that, like he said, the half of that building, normally 1,400 square foot would be rather than far more, a mini-split, but they're just really concerned on the half of that, I think we've got about 18, I think about 18 foot wall on the ground. Any questions?
You have any questions for John here about this? All right. Our original commitment, just to quantify this, was roughly $3,800 in the form of windows and a $2,000 contribution. That's now being bumped up to about 14,500 in order to get that full four-ton air conditioning unit, not a split unit, but a full unit. Nothing has changed in terms of the lease terms, as far as the number of months given at no cost, and the discounted rent for a period of two years. So the question before you at this time, are you willing to make an additional contribution to this, to get this building usable and to get a tenant in that corner?
Have you thought about getting someone else to, another bid to do this work, or are we stuck with this construction company?
Well, since we're not getting into that business, I don't want the county involved in that. That is another alternative. We could take over some of that work and get it up to the specifications that they're asking for, but if we can stay out of that, I think that we should. John, as far as you looking for the best possible price on that, do you have any comments for us?
No, I think, I think he's got a little bit of vested interest with us, also, his daughter works with us. So, you know, he, we sit down and talk with him, try to explain this, we're not made to go, so, you know, try to work with the best you can. We did a little bit of checking, call around just to make sure, you know, any time you get a bid on that, it's nice to keep a friend, to get second opinion on stuff. We've got a big project working in Parish ourselves, we've got actually new construction going on over there in Parish Support Facility, so we've got quite a bit going on, and so we're dealing with a lot of contractors, so to me, looking at everything, single player, I mean, even the 1,200, I mean, I think we and I talked, that seemed like a pretty fair deal, putting all that baton on the top and stuff like that. We dealt with wood AC, air conditioning, and I think you've had a chance to talk to those guys last week, so. Everything seems pretty legitimate on our part, you know, it was a big increase for us, so. Apologize, we have to come back, I doubt it's not late, we just wanted to begin with, but obviously, there were a couple unforeseen things that we weren't aware of, so. But it's your guys' fault, so I feel pretty confident with it this one. We're trying to turn over some of the best we can this time, so.
I don't, the prices on air condition, of course, you can call and check individually what this would cost for this and that stuff, but I think it's, to me, it's surprising it's not higher than what it, I thought it would be. As I, you know, you always know there's going to be some things coming back that you were not sure of, but I think it's fair.
We will recoup $6,000 a year in rent over a two-year period, so we will, two and a half years from now, we'll recoup that 12,000 of that 14,500. So that's, there is some source of revenue there, and at the end of that time, we'll have a building that's, that is rentable, whether we renegotiate with Print Works, or whether we look at another use there. You will have here, as you can see, $35,000 that's been contributed toward that building that has cost us very little at the end of two and a half years.
Like that motion?
Motion's made for approval of the additional county contribution, $14,500 towards this project.
Second.
Second is made by Commissioner Apple Whitehall. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. John, thank you. Appreciate your additional contribution, and sorry that it turned out this way, but that was a pretty needy building over there, and looking at those original costs, I got to tell you, I'm not shocked at where you've ended up here, and we appreciate you all being willing to stick with it and add additional funds. All right? Okay, thank you. Moving right on to item number 15, consider and possibly approve an elevator maintenance contract. I received a quote from our former company, that was, as you'll recall, Schindler. They were still interested in servicing our elevator. We also received a service agreement quote from This and Crup that just installed our brand-new elevator, and while they were close, This and Crup was a little bit cheaper. It makes sense to me to have the guys that installed this brand-new elevator be the ones that will service it. And this amounts to, this is a gold service agreement, which appears to me to have the necessary level of service that we need. They will make regular visits here about quarterly, they will be available during regular work hours, and the cost on this is, I think it's $180 a month, but let me find that dollar here, figure for you. $180 per month excluding taxes payable annually in advance, so that $180 times 12 plus taxes would be payable in advance, and this is a five-year contract that starts immediately and non-cancelable.
I don't think we'd back that. We don't.
That would make sense. Okay.
Can you please, I'll leave Austin after something.
All right. Anyway, that's my recommendation. I liked working with these guys, they're knowledgeable, and other than interruptions that were caused by unforeseen circumstances, or the fact that they were needed on emergency work, we ended up with a good product, and they did work with us to find solutions that helped us keep the costs down, and these guys are as local as anybody else, and they do have other work in our area. And so I would like to continue to work with This and Crup and enter into this five-year gold service agreement with them.
Okay, motion?
Motion by Commissioner Fields.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number, okay. Can you, I think I just need to make a call to, to tell him that we're going to be running late on our, on our call, or I may end up just turning this over to you and Carl, and I might have to step out. Consider possibly approve hiring Benton Rainey Tire and Recovery for removal. I'm going to let you all discuss that, and I'm going to step outside and see if I can delay our conference call with our bond underwriters.
Okay, we'll go ahead and look at this. We had talked about, Mr. Riddles had talked about it, and I don't have a better problem. This is the same company's done this before for us, and I think what we've been doing is taking the prisoners, and they'd bring down the big 18-wheeler trailers, and we'd get the prisoners, put the tires in here, and they'd come pick them up. It's been costing $2 a tire, I think that's the same quote, anything that's 20 inches or more, it's so much inch. I think it's a dollar inch. We don't have those big, big tires, big tractor tires, I think we have like 18, 19, or 20 of them. The others, we have hundreds of them. So I agree with Mr. Riddles that we need to continue to go ahead, we need to get those tires up. Where we come up, and I don't know what you do on this, where we're getting most of these, Carl, is when we have our cleanup day, people are throwing them in the dumpsters. Now, I had put some signs up several years ago, and I throw my signs in the dumpster, no tires, no batteries, no this and that, but I think we might could get some little signs made, and put on both sides of the dumpster that sticks in the ground like political signs, and instead of putting them on a stick or something and driving them in, I think that would work better. But I think a lot of people would abide by that, but you're always going to have some that throw them in there. What do y'all want to do, commissioners?
Just a copy of what they said last year is what they're charging.
Okay.
Yeah, that's. Carl and I, well, I bought us 10 more minutes.
These are the prices, and we talked about last year prices. We haven't got anything, I'm sure they'll.
We don't have a lot of options in this business, apparently, and we were pleased with the work that they did.
Yes.
And perhaps we'll have other options. Who knows, you might even want to purchase a tire shredder machine and start making money for the county. That was Cheryl's suggestion. I'll give her the credit.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Fields, second by Commissioner Riddle, to do business with Benton Rainey for the time being, to get rid of some of our salvage title, our tires. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 17, discuss and possibly approve an extension of our outside auditors with Arnold Walker and Arnold. Carl, will you address that for us and explain why we're handling it this way, possibly as opposed to a fresh bid?
First, number three, it's three or two years.
Three.
But in contrast, we could go year to year with one too. We, we have been checking the city, who the cities use them, who some of the other counties are using. The ones they're using are not happy with, so they're switching, so we don't really have anybody. Anywhere recently, they haven't picked anybody else happy.
Specifically, that company last year, or three years ago, that was competitive in the bid?
That's right.
And they're out of.
Greenville.
Greenville.
Conway.
Conway, yeah, Conway.
So one, one of the other counties, so, anyway, they're not, they're indicating they're not going to go back with them again, so I can go get some bids, I do whatever I want to do. And he was supposed to give props, I didn't want to.
I've got it, I have not opened it.
You consider that, or you can go up the bids and offer all kinds of studies that other counties are using. I would usually, you know, you tell the firms that if they're far enough away, you can have the paper, overnight stays here, things like that, but, you know, whatever y'all want to decide.
This is a one-year tag, tacked-on proposal from Arnold and Walker. Their original bid was a three-year bid, there were slight increases over those, over that period of time. This, they are submitting here the cost of a one-year extension to that contract, and I'll give you that pricing on here. This is from Arnold Walker and Arnold. We were asked to go ahead and give you a proposed estimate fee for the 2017 audit for your consideration. Our proposed fee for the audit of the county for the year ended 2017, that's September, will be $30,675, which is an increase of approximately 3% over the 2016 fee. Also, we would perform the audit of the juvenile probation department for the year ended August 31 for a fee of $2,500. So.
That's paid by the probation.
Yeah, the $2,500. So this is what we're dealing with, where there's only so many people. So this is what we're dealing with, where there's only so many people that are even interested in bidding on a job like this, and if they're having to come from out of town, it drives the cost up. The one that was competitive, that we considered three years ago, our investigation of their services has produced two disappointed customers that are no longer going to use them, and so we are back to Arnold and Walker, who says we will add on another year for a three percent increase.
Make a motion, we do that.
Motion's made by Commissioner Fields to entertain this offer by Arnold Walker and Arnold, and contract with them for the 2017 audit, thirty thousand six seventy-five and twenty-five hundred for juvenile probation audit. Got a motion by Commissioner Fields.
Seconded.
I would like to make this comment, that they tell us every year in school that you should change auditors, should get a set of eyes over two or three years, and...
That's right. I love to do whatever y'all want to do, it doesn't matter. I was participating in the city, using the fair, and everything, but I will, I'll send the people off to state, that is a good practice.
Motion by Commissioner Fields, I did get a second, but was it Commissioner Parker? All in favor of continuing, at least for one more year, with Arnold Walker? Arnold, say aye.
Aye.
Keep an ear out, if you hear of anybody that you think might be a willing participant. I don't think there's anybody up here that wouldn't agree.
If you're on the year, you might have to buy the loan, spend a little more money, maybe forty thousand dollars, get our readers, but you might have to do that for a couple of years, you know, I'm not going to ask another year's loan, but there is only one loan for us that has home, so.
Well, I think we need to look at, in this extension here, during this extension, look at finding somebody else to do it.
We can find them, just be prepared for an increase, and that may be, that may be money, money well spent, to give us peace of mind that, you know, we're doing the prudent thing. All right. Item number eighteen, consider and possibly extend obligation to the county park.
Judge.
We're still working on getting a viable entity to take over that county park, and we're this close, but in order to get that, I don't know if they've named who that's going to be, it's down to two very capable parties, and they really ask till the end of July. I went ahead and said to the end of August, just so we don't have to do this again, but I feel real good about who they are talking to, and I think this will be a good match for everybody, but let's, if we can continue to do what we are doing to keep the county park going and providing services for somebody that mows and cleans up the restroom, and for James to collect the money, let's do so.
Make that motion.
Motion's made by Commissioner Fields.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Riddle to extend. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number nineteen, I'm going to be absent on Monday, the date of our next scheduled meeting. You can operate it without me, it's fine. I don't anticipate any, in fact, I don't know if we have anything on there right now, we may have one or two items on there. It'll be a short meeting, your choice, would you like to have that meeting on Friday, July seventh, or in my absence on the tenth?
I don't have a problem with it.
I don't have a problem with seven.
Okay.
Mr. Allen.
I don't either. I'm here.
Okay, motion's made by Commissioner Fields to have that next meeting, our first meeting of the month of July, three days earlier, on Friday, the seventh.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's see here, I'm going to let you all discuss, if we run out of time, I'm going to save item twenty for the end. Let's bump, skip over item twenty. Item number twenty-one is travel and seminars. I've got a request from Sheriff Ingram these first three or four. He'd like to send Sheila Landers and Nina Andrews to Kilgore, basic county corrections. We've got a two-hundred-dollar registration cost, times two, and test fee, and meals, so registration, meals, and test fee for these two in Kilgore in August, eight hundred sixty dollars total for those two. Another request from the sheriff, send Justin Mayville Corporal to intermediate arrest, search, and seizure. No large costs here, basically fifty-dollar registration cost and gasoline for him to attend that. Same individual, Justin Mayville, Mayville, intermediate use of force, an online course, registration fifty dollars only. And then Clerk Joan Newman would like to attend 2017 Vital Statistics Regional Conference in Fort Worth on August ninth, a one-day, hundred forty-five dollars, plus meals, plus travel, five hundred and sixteen dollars. Those are all of them.
Look inside travel.
Sorry, submitted late, I'm sorry, denied. Carl would like to go to Lubbock.
What's that like?
It's beautiful this time of year.
Yeah.
On-the-road training in Lubbock, the thirteenth and fourteenth, would like to travel on the twelfth. We've got meals, a hotel, that's two nights in the hotel, right? Two thirty-two on the hotel, eighty dollars on meals, travel, and I know you've researched it, didn't you decide to go by plane, it's cheaper than the mileage, eleven hundred seventy-three dollars and fifty-six cents. That'll be in July, on the thirteenth, fourteenth. So that completes...
All four of you.
All four of you.
Chris D., don't worry. Sharendes.
Okay. Sharon's is a little bit less, in that Carl's taken his personal car to the airport. Sharon's at eight hundred eleven dollars, and Christie's a little bit less, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars. So that's to send...
Shelby's the last one.
Shelby's the last one. She gets even cheaper, five hundred fifty-five dollars and ninety-six cents. So eleven seventy-three, eight eleven, seven eighty-eight, and five hundred fifty-five. Those four, to send all of the auditors out of town, plus the, plus the first four. That's all of the travel requests.
I make motion, approve travel.
Motion made by Commissioner Parker.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Fields. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approve oral and written reports.
We're ahead of noon, three hundred, please bring in ten thousand dollars. Three hundred and ten thousand dollars, maybe a dollar, because I quit with the job. Make sure you're fine.
Let me ask you all something. Carl and I do need to have this conference call, what do you think that'll last, fifteen minutes? I hate to shortchange this on any of this, would you all mind taking a fifteen, twenty-minute break here? Let's do that, I can quit worrying about being late on this conference call, we got a lot of high-powered people, more than us, that are, that are waiting for us. So if we can do that, we will, let's reconvene at, just stay in the area and we'll find you. I'm going to target for about eleven-thirty to eleven-forty will be the best I can do. So we will recess until between eleven-thirty and eleven-forty. Thank you. Okay, now we got another noon meeting, so hopefully we can get this one done. Have you all had a chance to look at your oral and written reports?
Yes.
If anybody's ready to make a motion, I'll entertain it.
What now?
Motion's made for approval, that is, and we're back out of recess, and it is twelve, what is it, Joyce, twelve forty-four, and we're back in regular session, considering oral and written reports, and I have a motion from Commissioner Parker for approval.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Our treasurer's report is the next item. I'll make a motion. Motion's made by Commissioner Parker, seconded by, no, I missed you again there. Commissioner Applewhite made the motion, Commissioner Fields seconded. All in favor of the approval of our treasurer's report, say aye.
Aye.
Budget amendments, Carl?
Thank you.
Item twenty-five, signed pay orders, approved payments.
Make motion for pay bills.
Motion by Commissioner Parker.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Let's jump back now to item twenty, consider and possibly take action on construction and repair projects to include, and we've got a few on here that, a couple of which we may have previously discussed, and then Commissioner Riddle, in his capacity as our assistance on repair and maintenance project, has made me aware of a couple of more. The rear of the Riddle Street Building, where we were putting down some rock to protect the soil in the absence of the rain gutters, I understand, has been completed and should take care of that, is that right?
I went by there and looked at it, and after it rained, and it was doing okay.
Looking good, looking good. All right, Commissioner Riddle, any, let me, that west wall was where that old plaster was peeling away from the outside of that west wall. Have you had any chance to look at that one yet?
Yeah, who did that front part, the, the, from, before, Richard, the one where it rented to protect, did Richard do that?
Do the plaster or the paint?
Plaster.
Oh, we didn't do any plaster work this most recent go-around, yeah. That was not part of, part of his work, he did the paint.
Whoever did that, huh?
Did he contract it?
The plaster?
Uh-huh.
We could find that guy, I mean, whoever did that, and we should get him to go on down.
Again, I don't believe there was any plaster work done on the most recent work that we did a couple of years ago.
It needs to be fixed. I don't think it's leaking, but it needs to be fixed. It's going to.
Talking about the back part?
Yeah, the back part.
That's where the election administration, where they have storage in their machines, these stuff about.
Yeah, but I, it was like that before, I mean, it's been that way a long, it needs to be fixed.
It's been that way a long time. I have no idea how long it's been since there was any plaster work, but it's far beyond any warranty work, I'm sure, and, you know, we just got to deal with it.
Richard did.
No.
Can we get bids? I think we should get some, somebody to look at it, somebody to tell us.
Any idea who would look at something like that, that would be knowledgeable on something like that?
There's a company, and I may have, still have a card or something on them out of, that I used at Chapel Hill, that, they're out of Gilmer, I cannot think of the name of it right now, but I'll look and see if I can find out.
What business are they in?
Yes, they do, do like stucco and that, that other type stuff out, you know, out there, and...
Well, if you could, yeah, if you could get a name and let Commissioner Riddle at least have a conversation with them, I think we need somebody with the expertise to look at that and tell us what even needs to be done, before we assume that there's more or less work there than, than we think. Be good to have an expert, is that okay with you?
Yeah.
If you've got anybody else that's in that plastering business?
I'll have, you know, somebody that does stucco or plaster.
I'll try to get you that name.
Okay, all right.
These next three are the ones that you brought to my attention, the north courthouse entrance over here, the north annex entry doors, and the extension office roof leak. I'll let you tell us about those.
The very first one is the north entrance to this courthouse. We got a water leak, whoever, it looked like the, you know, you do a sidewalk, exposed aggregate for the floor, somebody's done it in the past for repairing the floor, cracks or covering them, or whatever it is, it's leaking, and it's leaking water.
Where's it coming from?
The rain, from the porch. It just grows on the porch and blows up against it. So it's leaking water, and it's leaking it down, if you go downstairs to the basement, and you see those, that steel beam, it's rusted all that steel beam out, and it looks like maybe there was a repair in there one time, but it's rusted out, and it's continuing to, water's running on it now. It rains, it's going down, when it runs up against the wall, it's dripping down into the basement.
So this isn't, I guess what I first understood, you were talking about water that hits the pavement outside or the sidewalk and runs down those stairs, that's not really what you're talking about?
No, 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 it hits a porch, you know, the steps.
Where the porch attaches to the, to the wall?
You walk up the steps, and then you got that porch, and there's the building, and all of that's coming up. Sometimes somebody back, they sprayed that aggregate or laid it, I'm not sure how they did, put cement on it, it's all coming up, it's cracking up, and water is going down at the seam where it fits the building. So it goes around, and then it comes down to the basement, then the beam and holding up the entrance to the basement where the restrooms are, used to be restrooms down here. Anyway, you can see the beam, and this, water's leaking on it, and water leaks out, so that beam, I don't know whether it's solid or not, but it looks at one spot, I'd like for you all to go look at it. Looks like to me they've repaired that beam. It's probably okay, so they welded it or put a...
Is this a beam that is the support of the steps?
No.
No.
The wall, above the ceiling, above that, it'd be the bottom of, the water's coming through the porch down to that, and it's just, it's a wall, it's a supporting wall of part of that thing. I think it's a supporting wall, I'm not an engineer, but you are, but somebody, I wish somebody, I think there's something that needs to be addressed, I mean, right away. I think it's...
Who, what would be the first, who would be the first person to contact, an engineer or a general contractor, or?
Richard. I don't think we'd do that.
I think Richard's about over his, he said as soon as he got through with his back, I mean, kind of getting off that back surgery and stuff, that he'd come up here and go through things in the courthouse, and that'd be a good project.
I'd recommend that we get it sealed, get it sealed off.
You think that's all, you think that's all it needs?
Then, after we got that done, that has to be done, I feel like. We don't have a choice, it's got to be sealed off. Then, then we can tear into that, tear that wall off and look at the beam and make sure, and get us engineer to make sure it's okay.
What about that guy that you'll call, let that stucco or stuff over there, let him look at it?
Yeah, if he blows stuff on walls, he probably knows how to seal up them.
Okay, the north...
I think we need to do it right away, on this one, around here. I think we need to do it right away, on this one, around here.
Okay, the north annex entry doors?
Yeah, those things.
The glass doors?
Yeah, they're just bad. They don't shut good, they hang up, and they tell me they've been like that a long, one of them's been like it, the other, one side's new, they said the other one's been like that for a long time, it just doesn't, they don't shut properly, they don't fit properly, I mean, might be bad, somebody might be able to repair them, but they, it's unsightly, but it's not, it's not urgent, I mean.
In other words, they're just out of square and they're not shutting properly?
They won't shut right, they're dragging at the bottom or dragging at the top as they shut, and they're staying open about a gfar.
Well, maybe a glass company like Taylor Glass that we've worked with, I would say that's who you could contact, at least for an assessment from them. I suppose worst case, we, you know, remove those doors and replace those doors, but it.
True, I don't know.
Let's get an expert to look at that, I'd recommend Taylor Glass. You've got, what's the other glass? Brown's Glass here in town, but Taylor's busy, but they did us a good job on the, on the work that they did over there at the annex in the back, putting on those crash bars. Now we've got a roof leak at our agricultural extension office too, also, don't we?
That's got, it leaks, and we, they had, anyway, the big cold, Hefner, Hefner put that new roof on, had a leak in, they say, he recommends that the screws be replaced, and I don't know, I've never heard of that, but apparently there's two or three different things, types of screws that I'm not familiar with. You have metal buildings, you've experienced, I've never had.
Yeah, we've had to go in there and completely replace the rotted-out screws, I don't know if that's the same situation here, but there's a rubber gasket under those screws that'll dry off.
That's the, that's the problem.
That's what he says the problem is, it cost about $3,000 something dollars to fix it. I haven't talked to him. David, we went down and changed the tile because it was wet, and they got wet again, so there, we got to fix the roof, and we had put some junk up there, some goo, David had, and it didn't stop it, didn't do it, so it, and we had to.
That's what he recommended.
Yeah, and I'm anxious to see what, what he does, because I've put, you know, metal buildings, chicken houses, barns, you know.
Yeah, but you had the old rubber.
Yeah, they, they come off, and I screwed it too tight, because, you know, I use one of those machines, so I'm anxious, I don't know how he wants to do it, but it's leaking again. We just erased all the tin and tile, and it's got tin and tile wet again a couple of them.
That roof's been on there since the early 90s.
I thought this wasn't lasting forever.
No.
Roof is lasting, it's the screw and the synthetic wash that's in there that.
He says all of them should be, he recommends all of them, all of them to be.
Replace all the screws?
Just by that one area.
If you're going to do it, you might as well do it, fix it. I'll do a portion of it, then rest of it start leaking.
Well, you got four items on here that all need the attention of an expert. I would recommend that you give Commissioner Riddle the ability to go out and seek at least some advice on what to do and/or a bid to repair.
Make a motion.
Motion's made by Commissioner Fields, and the motion would be, how did I word it, to authorize Commissioner Riddle to solicit bids or to solicit expertise from appropriate party in each of these matters.
I'd like everybody to look at that one in the front.
Yeah.
Somebody to just go down there.
I got a motion, did I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Parker, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you for looking at these and identifying, all of these are important. Closing comments, let's see, we'll have our second conference call with the people working on our bond refinance, $20 million in bonds, and hopefully we're going to get that done, we're able to report to them, you know, they're at, they're finding out if there's any significant negative factors working against the county that would possibly jeopardize our ability to refinance and service these bonds. Of course, the answer is no, there's not, but they've got to ask a lot of questions, so we'll break away here for a noon meeting. That's the only comments that I had, let's see, yeah, that's the only thing I can think of.
Just get it done, Judge. That's a big savings for the county.
Comments, Commissioner Fields, Commissioner Riddle, Commissioner Applewhite.
I have nothing.
Or Commissioner Parker. Okay. Yeah, is anybody gone Thursday or Friday, if he needs to throw together a quick Thursday afternoon or Friday meeting, if anybody here?
What was he going to get a quote on now?
Find out why he didn't get any bids on those pieces of equipment, if they didn't understand, or they weren't interested in bidding, or what.
If you bring them in, you want to try to. Especially if you do that, I think you're going to have to rebid it. He passed that, but call, call Austin, call Bob Bass or somebody.
We didn't, we didn't get any bids.
We didn't open any bids, that's what I'm saying, but it says you have to run into paper so much.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Motion was made by Commissioner Fields, seconded by Commissioner Applewhite, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll sign these.